K L T V sound check, K L T V sound check. K L T V sound check.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday meeting of the B O C C. If you're able and you want to join me, we'll do the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes, Commissioner Hordson.
Good morning, everyone. As usual, I looked over the minutes of the activities last week and I moved to approve those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Any questions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I told, before I get into consent agenda, Carolyn had a request and I told her I'd give her a couple of minutes before I get into that. So she doesn't have to sit here all day. Although now I know she's not in Arizona, I should have made her wait till the end.
So I appreciate just a few minutes. Having just a couple of minutes to request some participation in these meetings has been very successful. And so here I am again. Each year, we have resolutions placed on the ballot and the jurisdictions are responsible for appointing committees for and also against their ballot titles. And they always appoint a committee for and not a committee against. So in your local voter's pamphlet, you want to read the statements that support a levy or a proposition and that oppose a levy or a proposition. And it's really not in their best interest to appoint those committees. And when they don't, it's left to me. So here I am. I've issued a press release and I'm asking for anybody that would like to participate. This particular levy is for the Castle Rock School District replacement levy. The law has changed effective 2025. You now have to reside within the jurisdiction. So in order for you to participate in the committee against, you would have to reside in the Castle Rock School District. So if you know any of your neighbors, friends, colleagues that have an interest and would like to participate, I would sure appreciate it.
Quick question. The passage is a simple majority.
Quick question, the passage is a simple majority?
Yeah, so school districts are different than other jurisdictions. They only require a simple majority. And just a caveat to that, we are seeing this in legislation where other jurisdictions are also trying to reduce their requirements to simple majority only rather than super majorities.
So the super majority, the super majority is still required when there's a bond issue.
For now.
Right.
But first of all, school districts are looking for their bond issues to be simple majority and then other jurisdictions. We've seen it already in legislation that hasn't gone anywhere. And typically it takes a few years for legislation to get, you know, wheels and get moving. So I expect to see it continue.
That is so surprising.
I know.
The ones that are surprising are the ones that you don't see coming back, the ones that hit you at oh, dark thirty and you know nothing about. Those are the true surprises.
So back, back in the day, there was a requirement that a certain number of people had to participate in an election to make it valid.
Yep.
And that used to be a, you know, pretty strict percentage.
That's validation and it is still required.
And the validation though has been adjusted to if enough people vote to equal the, the yes portion of the validation, that the election can still get validated. Kind of a crazy little minor detail, but it has, they've been whittling away at the, at the super majority for, for a number of years.
Exactly. And expect more changes in the future. So if anybody finds somebody interested, please come to the elections office and we'll get you the rules and get you signed up. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Carolyn.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you live inside this Castle, the Castle Rock School District, don't you?
I do.
Well, there you go.
Every once in a while I do attend meetings. They made me wish I wouldn't at times, but I do. Run through consent agenda, agreements, contracts, bid awards. The first one is just an extension of a consulting services with professional with Gray and Osborne, Inc., engineering consultant. And that'll, that's been extended to December thirty one of two thousand twenty five. Two through ten are all agreements with local departments for use of the gun range. Two is Castle Rock, three is Woodland. And these all extend the terms from January first through the end of, to December thirty first of twenty five. Yesterday, Sheriff Thurman told us the, the conditions of the agreement remain the same as they have in the past. So this is just a renewal for Castle Rock, Woodland, Longview, Kalama. The Calhoun Indian Tribe, Kelso, Calhoun County Corrections, Washington State Patrol. Number ten is not part of that, so. Two through nine are just renewal of agreements for the gun range. Ten is an agreement with C H R Creative LLC to provide techno, technology management and technology administration services. It's a, it's a firm we use, IT uses for overflow help and, and help in different areas. And they've a, it's a contract we've had in place. They've amended the contract to better reflect what we use them for. Not from what we saw yesterday. I don't see any significant change in, in, in cost. It's just a, a change more focused on what we ask them to do. So that's on there. Board correspondence. We received a letter dated eleven twenty seven twenty four from Ashley Penner, Vice President, General Counsel with the Building Industry Association of Washington regarding the code officials must comply with initiative two thousand sixty six. And then we had vouchers in an amount of one million, two hundred seventy six thousand, eight twenty nine and twenty four cents. Any comments on consent?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, the first item refers to stormwater permits. It's a federal law that requires management of stormwater that's being discharged into bodies of the state and they have to follow national guidelines. So we hired the, the experts to, to work on that. Our county engineer is in, in the audience and I, I was wondering if the county is still working on the committee with other local governments to kind of unify the, the permit aspect. I know in the past that we've done a collaborative effort so that it's, it's a little bit simpler since all the stormwaters kind of blend downhill.
So yes, good morning, Susan Eugenius. Yes, we are still working with Longview, Kelso. And the school districts and CDID number one is a collaborative for all our public education. There are certain aspects of the permit that we do ourselves, our mapping, our cleaning and updating of our own facilities. But we have a group called Calhoun's Clean Waters. You can find them on the web where we have our public education. In our community outreach, we come as a unit. We're at things like the trick or treating at the lake. We were there. We do our annual calendar contest. That group holds that. We also did a coloring contest this year for elementary age kids. And next year we're going to add on a video contest for the high school age group. We give out prizes for those when you see it as public outreach. We have flyers that are unified across the jurisdictions and we are usually at Earth Day. We did the squirrel fest and then we were at the, one of the open houses at the fire stations this year. So we go out and do public outreach as a unit and do our public education, our behavior change program. Those are all run jointly.
So I know in the last fifteen, twenty years or so, part of the control mechanism has been trying to monitor the public car washes. Used to have fundraisers all the time. And that, that detergent water goes into the stormwater system. And so they've tried to scale back. They haven't eliminated the public fundraisers, but they're not nearly, nearly as often as they used to be.
That's correct because the in the detergents, it's a nutrient and it can cause algae blooms. So if you're washing your car and it's not going to the sewer, it's encouraged to do it on your grass because the grass will filter it instead of it going directly to the stream, which can cause algae blooms. And that, that is something that EPA recommends nationwide.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The other item that I wanted to just comment on was the letter that we received from the Building Industry Association of Washington. They are a special interest group that, that was one of those vote yes on the initiative. Carolyn talked a little bit about those committees. The state, state has the committee. And this was a group that was sponsoring that. And that was the initiative that was narrowly passed that undid some of the state building code regulations restricting the acquisition of natural gas appliances in homes. The, the state code had tried to eliminate that, those and this initiative. Because you voted yes, you were able to undo those, those restrictions. And there, the letter was just, I, I guess their way of telling our building officials to follow the initiative since it passed. And of course, the building officials take their orders from the building council. And they haven't responded yet. We were, we had a little bit of a discussion yesterday. That's a, a bit of a timing thing, but it, it will all get sorted out.
So are you suggesting the building council could ask building and planning departments to act in opposition of the law?
Well, I think they have to follow the law, so. There's, there's, I mean, the code, the code has been adopted. The code has to be undone in order, in order to implement the initiative. And they're saying, don't wait.
Is contrary to the law at the moment. And so building and planning departments have to decide are they going to abide by the law or by the building council? Right?
Well, I, I, I think the situation is what they were pointing out is the, the code is in conflict with the latest law. And usually those things get sorted out. You don't, you don't act just on the behalf of a, of a letter. I mean, it's so sad official step, so.
It's an interesting problem because I've seen this often in bureaucracy when the bureaucrats, the building council passed all those rules, right? And they're reluctant to undo what they've done. So maybe two years from now, we'll get it all written up. And each time we check on them, they're, well, we're working on it. Meanwhile, we got two years of worth of people seeking permits and stuff like that.
In limbo.
In my book, it shouldn't be in limbo, but.
I, I remember for twenty five years ago, there was an initiative limiting property taxes to no more growth than one percent a year, that one percent. It was challenged and it went to the, all the way up to the state Supreme Court who ruled it unconstitutional. And they, and it was kind of like on a technicality. There were too many, if I remember correctly, it was too many topics in, in, in that legislation. But to resolve the issue, legislature ended up passing a bill that essentially did establish that one percent limit. So legislature can also play a role if the courts are, are interfering with, with it. So interesting that one percent's been pretty difficult to change.
Yeah. Our current leadership hasn't shown a propensity to listen to the, the voters. Are you paying thirty five dollars for car tabs? So I don't think they're going to let this one go easily. Opinion. Any other questions on consent?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve today's consent agenda as listed by staff.
Hey, we have a motion to approve. Last chance for, I don't see anybody online. Okay, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Motion items. Public Works. We do have hearings today at nine thirty and nine forty five. Looks like we're cruising along, but we'll just be conscious of that.
So good morning again. Susan Eugenius, County Engineer. Item number eleven is an amendment to number two to a professional service agreement with RH two engineering for the Ryderwood supplemental water source. It extends the expiration date till December thirty first, twenty twenty five and increases the not to exceed amount by thirty thousand dollars to cover additional electrical and telemetry work that Public Works requested that the consultant add to its contract. This telemetry work will allow us to monitor the reservoir level, level to make sure we're not going too high or too low. It will call out staff in the case of emergency and they can check what the level is. This project, for those of you who aren't familiar, is adding a raw water tank up to the Ryderwood system before the treatment plant to help us in drought conditions. Wearing this project will be going out to bid in early January.
And is this one of the ARPA funded projects as well?
Yes, this is partially ARPA and partially congressional money.
Just the, it's item number twelve and a handout for the public. Now there have been some changes.
I apologize. Item number twelve.
And it's, it's kind of a companion to the next item, isn't it? Another water project.
Yes.
Using the same consulting firm to do basically the same thing, allow for automatic telemetry and monitoring.
Yes, the next one is with the same consultant for telemetry for the Toodle Water System Improvement Projects, which is currently out to bid.
And did that get a community funding from the Congress as well as ARPA?
This one is just ARPA.
Okay.
Is this a single event kind of thing or are we contracting with them probably into the far future?
This particular engineer, when we went out for RFQs for three of the five water sewer ARPA projects was a successful consultant selected. So they are working on the Ryderwood, the Toodle Water System Improvements, and then the Shadow Mountain Project. We do not have an ongoing contact with them.
But I mean to say what they're doing now, we're not buying a, a permanent solution we manage thereafter. Or we were asking them and we'll have to ask some agency or some entity again to do the monitoring or the telemetry.
Once the telemetry is installed, it is something we monitor. We will, if there's electrical repairs that need to be made, that would be something we'd have to hire out. But it, that generally probably would not be this consultant.
Right. So we don't foresee this again a year from now?
No, they, unless we happen to do another contract, I don't see RH two for a while.
Ask my colleague, except I know his answer. A year from now?
Oh, you were talking to the chairman?
And both of those, the increases are something we requested.
Yes, these are items we requested.
Expand the scope of work a little bit.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve amendment number two to the professional services. That's item twelve. And with permission, I will add item thirteen, amendment number three, to the same agreement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item twelve, amendment number two, and item thirteen, amendment number three. Any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye.
Thank you.
Susan. We're staying with Public Works, but I think it's Sean. Yeah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Raywick, Public Works. Today before you, we have an agreement with DAY Wireless for the installation of add-on equipment on county-owned emergency vehicles. Currently, we have a third-party vendor that upgrades the emergency vehicles for the county. This allows us a second vendor and a more local vendor for more timely upfitting of vehicles.
DAY Wireless does stuff for us now in other capacities, right?
They do. They do some of our radio work and other communication items.
I, I think they're pretty critical with the operation of nine one one as well, the, the towers and communications back and forth. Does this proposal have anything to do with solving the, the delays that they're experiencing?
We expect that this will help resolve the delays on getting sheriff vehicles on the road.
Ready?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agreement with DAY Wireless for the installation of add-on lights, sirens, and equipment on county-owned emergency vehicles.
Okay, we have motion to approve an additional vendor, right? Yeah, okay. Any questions, comments from anybody? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye.
Thank you.
Health and Human Services.
Good morning. Gina James, Health and Human Services. We have two items on the agenda this morning. The first item is a contract with Washington State Department of Health. This is called the Consolidated Contract. The state sends this contract a little bit differently than we see other contracts come to us. So they first send just the general terms and conditions of the contract. So that's what we have on the agenda today is the general terms and conditions. What happens then in early twenty five, we'll see amendments to this contract where they add scope of work and funding. This contract is where we see the foundational public health services funding, a little bit of emergency. a little bit of, um, emergency preparedness, maternal-child health, um, a little bit of those, group B funding, some of those other types of scope of works that we see historically. So, as I mentioned, this is, um, just the general terms and conditions. It's a three-year contract. So starting January 1st of 2025 through December 31st of 2027, with the scope of works and the funding to follow.
At this point, if we looked at the contract, we wouldn't see any of the dollar amounts. It would just be the conditions.
Correct.
And each time they send an amendment, then, then we have the opportunity to approve or disapprove.
Correct.
The, the program or dollar amounts or whatnot.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Gina, can you refu- review for us the, the conditions by which we find out the data, um, the impacts, the various programs they fund have on people's lives?
So.
How does that process work?
Yeah, so it's kind of, um, we're still learning that with the foundational public health services, we're just sort of starting, um, spending that funding. Um, with some of the other programs, it kind of works the opposite way where if we have a case of something, then we might get ream- they might send us funding for reimbursement. We just saw that, I think it was a perinatal Hep B case that we had. And so then the state sent us some funding for reimbursement of that. Um, the, some of the other items depend on, so like maternal-child health, for example, um, that's a partnership we have with the state where we're looking at, um, some of those children with special healthcare needs. Um, and there's a piece of that that we help with, um, with the state in partnership with that program. So that's kind of client-based eligibility-driven in that sense. Um.
So the agencies that ultimately get the dollars through us from the state periodically report back to you. They provide a report, usually on a quarterly basis that gives you an update on how the programs are going.
These particular, this particular funding, uh, we don't contract, we don't pass it through to community partners. It supports work that we do within the health department.
Okay. I'm probably thinking more of the, the health services programs, like homelessness and those kinds of grants.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consolidated contract with Washington State Department of Health as has been presented. Okay, we have a motion to approve the consolidated contract. Any questions, comments? I, I do have a question. So the, uh, generally, you know, I think I've asked a very similar question to my, to my colleague. When we act as a pass-through, we don't, we're responsible for the proper administration of the funds, but we don't quite have a handle on, on that being properly used. The best example I've used in the past is if we authorize the purchase of an item, we don't go actually onsite and see that item and say, indeed, this is the right serial number and everything else. And, uh, that's always made me feel un- un- comfortable because it's, it's really clear that you can only do an inadequate job of auditing. Same thing with, uh, rent control, uh, fund, or not rent control, uh, rent subsidy funding. We don't get to see who collected the funds. You don't get to see who it is. So you don't get to go and check out and make sure that there isn't anything strange in there. I just thought I'd let the public know. We do the best we can. I know Gina does, and it's just the law, uh, uh, yeah. The law says you have to know everything we make, but if somebody's receiving other handouts, they don't have to, they don't have to be announced to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, true. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll take a, a vote. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Item 16.
Yes, so our second item on the agenda is a contract amendment with Prevention MD LLC. This is, uh, our contract with our health officer, Dr. Crager. Um, the amendment is just extending the agreement through December 31st of 2025. It's currently set to expire the end of 2024, so we'd like to extend it. We did make a note, I think it was suggested yesterday, we made a note on our calendars for 2025 to make sure we touch base with the Board of Health before it comes up for renewal again.
Been a fa- fast year.
Mm-hmm. It has.
I think, I haven't, in my opinion, he's done a, done a fine job for us, so I don't, can't really have any problem with this. Yeah, I, I also appreciate how, uh, he handled the transition. There was no negative fallout. In fact, it was quite, quite the opposite.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What my colleagues are referring to is that we originally had a contract with, um, Dr. Crager's boss to be the health officer. And so he was the, always the deputy. Well, he's now our health officer on a permanent basis. And that was a recommendation made by the, the Board of Health. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we do approve the contract amendment with Prevention MD LLC in order to extend the contract for Dr. Crager to continue to serve as the Council's County Local Health Officer through the end of 2025.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, approve the contract amendment extension for Dr. Crager. Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
And I think that. I think this right into the first chair. Okay. Good timing. Finance Department.
Good morning. Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. Um, the Office of Financial Management, um, is requesting, the need to adjust and amend our 2024 county budget. Um, and we have a few handouts here on the details of that. And so, um, if you'd like, I, I'll summarize some of the major changes. Um, for the general fund, our sheriff's department, um, has several line items, um, requesting adjustment. Number one, they have, they need to purchase tasers. Um, and so they're moving some funds from different lines up to small tools and minor equipment. Um, they also have the need for some additional expenses related to, um, a couple of new contracts, which they have rep- new revenue coming in to offset those. And then they also are, um, requesting funding to be, um, to be used by our motor pool, um, for them to replace radios. They anticipate a major replacement of their radios' equipment. Um, and so, um, that would be done through our motor pool. And so they would like to pay the motor pool, um, $165,000 to get that accomplished. And then in the coming year, and so Motor Pool would have those funds available to them once, um, appropriate vendors selected. So we will also have an adjustment later on the sheet for Motor Pool. And then, um, for our Budget Stabilization Fund, we estimated $550,000 contribution this year to that fund. We, our actual calculation is finalized and we will be doing, um, $609,754. So we want to amend that. And then on our Parks and Recreation, we have a small adjustment of $4,792 um, for, primarily for extra help for the summer camping, um, um, season. And then we have some additional revenue in the general fund to offset those, um, contracts-related items in the sheriff's department of $6,100. A total reduction in general fund, ending fund balance of 63,546. And then so we have other various, um, amendments, um, for other special revenue funds. And for example, in, um, Superior Court, they needed some additional office supplies. Um, that's the law library. And then, um, emergency management, they have a grant, new grant. So there's new expenses and new revenue. That's about $29,500. And then on our information technology area, they had some additional expenses this year they incurred for minor equipment. And so there, and some professional contracts. And they're asking for an amendment of $204,537. Um, and those funds will be coming from their reserve fund, which was, um, for equipment purchase primarily. And then we have some other miscellaneous adjustments in our risk management area to, uh, to transfer out $30,000 to our liability claims. We're anticipating some expenses related to our annex building that will be following under insurance claims. We seek to recover those funds, um, in 2025. And then, as I mentioned, Motor Pool, um, will, um, bill the sheriff's department $165,000. And, uh, that will contribute to their ending fund balance, $165,000 until the purchase is made. And then in our elections area, we, um, reviewed their expenditures for the year and they're needing, um, some additional, um, budget adjustments for that, uh, due to temporary services, um, postage, things like that, to the tune of $111,000. And they're taking that from their ending fund balance. And then law enforcement records, um, had a, um, had a retirement and they're seeking to reimburse, um, the sick leave and vacation payout associated with that. But they're just moving it from one of their existing line items, reducing. That was $22,162. That's, that's the extent of all the budget adjustments.
You know, you, you see these and, and I think it's good to point out, if you want to just look at IT, it's, it's, these really are, are adjustments different than what we expected. It's not that they didn't have the, the money. We set aside funds for them to cover these type of things. It's just, it's different than what we expected from the very,
Right.
very first. So it's.
And, and anticipated.
Don't want to give the impression that they're always asking for more money. A lot of it is sitting there. It's just, when it's allocated and how it's allocated.
Correct.
And we have to account for that and ensure it.
Yeah.
So just a, this is a series of questions that is a public display of my ignorance. A, how many budget adjustments will this be for 2024 budget?
So for 2024 budget, we typically do, um, quarterly, um, reviews of the budget. So typically you'll see about four a year. I think we've had this year, um, a couple of additional ones due to contracts, grants of that nature. So I think in total for this year, there's been probably about six.
Okay, and, uh, what you mentioned, a couple of the triggers, uh, new contracts coming in that were many cases unforeseen and so forth. Uh, and there's a reclassification. We thought this was this kind of money, but it really is this kind of money.
Correct.
The net sum in the latter case, when you do adjustments, it's just a bookkeeping exercise.
Correct.
Right, and not to say it isn't important. So the, the more difficult question for me is, um, at the, uh, sometime next, let's say next June, we're going to look back and say, we had a budget and we had actuals. It seems like along the way, we try to adjust the, the act, the budget to reflect actuals. Uh, and that, while I understand it, I, I don't know what would cause the final adjustment. Uh, for example, we're, we're $63,000 plus or minus that I think I, I would claim is what we need to spend beyond what we had thought or advertised we would need to spend. Uh, did that cause a true, cause the, of, cause the trigger? Probably not, because it was a collection of things with other triggers.
And there's departments also, these are particular departments where we're seeing their budgets, um, are not sufficient to cover. Some of the expenses are needing to be moved around to other line items. But there's departments where we're not amending their budgets at all, that they're not going to expend the entire budget.
I think it's important to note that, say, in the spring of 25, uh, you will do an amendment to 2025 budget and that I think is pretty useful because you're going to use that as a guide. We're going to use it as a guide into the future. But when it comes to the December of 2024 for the, for the 2024 budget, I'm like, okay, why isn't it just actuals anyhow? I know you know the answer. I don't. Any other questions up here, Dennis?
So, uh, uh, the, a couple of bits of good news about this, uh, from, from my perspective is when you, when we consider that we have about a, the, the general fund budget is what we're basically dealing with. Over the entire year, that amounts to close to $35 million, 45 million. I can't, I can't.
So, so the general fund expenditure budget is more in the range of about $76 million.
So, um, we're basically, out of that entire amount, we have to dip into reserves about $63,000, which means we've come in, we're, we're coming in pretty, pretty darn well. In addition, even better news is that we have found over $600,000 that we set aside for this emergency stabilization fund.
Correct.
And, you know, always being able to add m- money that isn't being spent because we kind of overestimated and underspent, um, is just good long-term policy. That, that stabilization fund is called that because, uh, under our own rules, it requires a unanimous, um, vote of the commission in order to dip into that special fund. So we're building up reserves that, that it, that we think are absolutely essential to have. And, uh, that $600,000 reflects fairly typical year in, year out. There's, we typically over, over-budget and underspend. It's usually been hidden in all the different departments, sub, uh, their own little, um, ending fund balances. And one of the things that we've discovered over the years is that, um, when vacancies, when positions, employment positions are authorized by us, they get funded, but the vacancies aren't filled. There's excess budget capacity and that, people get used to having plenty of extra budget capacity. So they don't have to worry about the, of the little details until it comes time to square up the budget. Because the state does require the expenditures to fit the budget, so.
And your budget stabilization fund, just for information purposes, um, at the end of this year, that fund will be $2.7 million.
When we do the percentage of reserve, we don't count the BSR, uh, the BSF, right?
We, we do. We include that, that budget stabilization fund as part of our reserve to meet our requirements of one month.
So our ending balance in '24 is going to be, I thought it was in the eight million dollar range.
Yeah, that's, that's what I have, um, estimated in the budget. But again, there's lots of departments in the general fund that we have not adjusted their budget to pull that money back that they haven't spent yet.
Okay.
That will be done at the end of the year.
Yeah, and then just one, one comment, $63,000 is 1% of the budget.
1% of revenue.
Uh, don't go to Deborah Gardner and say, you just need to balance within 1%. And she would shoot you. But, uh, But it is, that's the fixed budget adjustment. So a fair comparison would be the integration of the adjustments all the way through.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, the the public hearing really is an opportunity for the public to point out things that we've missed, services that are needed, that we can look into and try to meet the needs that the people have.
Any other questions up here? We will open up public hearing, part of it. If you have any questions or comments from the public, we'll certainly take them. Seeing none, we'll close it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the twenty twenty four budget amendment, as we have worked shop at nauseam and has been presented this morning.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We've had opportunity for public comments, so we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
I think we're right on time for the sheriff department for the next public hearing. Morning. It's hard to know whether that's a joy or a complaint, but it doesn't matter.
Is the light on for your microphone?
It is now.
There you go.
There we go. I forgot about that. So we're here now with two ordinances.
And you are whom?
I'm Jason Lorraine with the prosecutor's office. I apologize, it's been a year since I've been out of the courtroom, so introducing myself to individuals, esteemed individuals in a day is
Interestingly, the color scheme in this room is still a courtroom scene, right?
Yeah.
Used to be a courtroom.
So we are here today, myself and Jordan Spencer with the sheriff's department, to present two ordinances, the first of which is an amendment of Calis County Code six point one two. As, as we discussed nearly six months ago, when the sheriff's department took over or assumed control of animal control in January of this year, they, they reached out to us to help them with the teething issues that were occurring. And what we came to do was evaluate that particular code chapter and, and found that it had not been revised for nearly thirty years. It was enacted in nineteen eighty five. The most recent revision was in nineteen ninety four. And safe to say that it did not reflect current trends within state legislation, as well as making efforts to prevent the county from being sued. So we took a hard look at that and made efforts to call certain sections that were no longer functioning or would no longer function well for the county, as well as amend and add new language that reflects current state legislation. Most, one of which reflects RCW sixteen fifty two oh eight five, which is a seizure of animals. And the seizure of animals, obviously, can never be easy, but as state law is starting to develop, it's becoming more and more clear that we review, view animals as being parts of the family. And so we really want to ensure that if we're removing liberty interests of that nature, we want to do it properly. And we want to afford as much due process as possible to an individual who may, may suffer such a loss. And so we amended six twelve to reflect sixteen fifty two oh eight five as, as best as we could. In addition, we removed sections from six twelve referring to kennels and the oversight of kennels. The sheriff, after observing what the duties and role of the animal control authority entailed, determined that oversight of kennels could better be dealt with in other admin, through other administrations, like the Department of Health. There is a certain whack that is on point with ensuring, you know, that kennels within the county are sanitary, I guess is the best way of putting it. There are other ways of addressing any sort of kennel issues as well, through animal cruelty statutes and/or just basic nuisance. And so with that, we felt that any oversight of kennels was adequately addressed just through either basic criminal code or administrative code. Therefore, it wasn't necessary for the Calis County Code to address that. Finally, because the sheriff has assumed the role of the animal control authority, this body needed to provide the sheriff the authority to do so. And so he included that in, in the county code as well.
Question for you. I learned long ago that things can be expressed simply, but with complex implications. In this case, if I'm a citizen out there, can you cite maybe the top three things I might see with the new change that I might not have seen with the old chain, with the old, old code?
If we're talking about seizures generally, there's a seventy two hour period that need, that as well as a redemption language within the statute or within the code, that it's going to better inform them of where they can go to redeem their animal, if indeed their animal has been seized for whatever reason.
Yeah, I was hoping for just a, a sort of contrived example that said, well, in the past, this would have happened, now it has to follow this process. And makes something up that you think is key pertinent to the essence behind the changes.
Well, again, I think those are, before, that wasn't very clear. Now it is clearer to the public. And I think that's the importance of, of amending code, is to ensure that the public is, is aware of what they can do. Under, with the change, I think it's sixteen twelve, two twenty or two forty, that, that, that enshrines the language of the RCW. Previously, the clarity for the public was opaque at best. Now there are specific steps in which they, which are outlined for them to take to redeem their animal. That's important. I think you, as a student of the Constitution, understand that due process is written in the amendments, not once, but twice. So it's pretty important. And that, that language that we're now adopting or asking this, you to adopt ensures that due process is, is, is there and clarified.
Okay, and dangerous animal, like if I have in my home a a black mamba and my neighbor knows I have it and he complains about me, do I have a problem?
Well, I don't want to jump ahead, because that's a second ordinance that we're going, and we won't even get there if you don't adopt this current ordinance before, that's before you now. However, to answer the question, no. But if your, if your dangerous animal then becomes a problem for someone else, then yeah. The, the issue is, is whether it's been declared. And again, that's part of due process. The animal needs to do something before that, that is, that runs contrary to what the county code states. And then once, once we've determined that it's done something contrary, it then we would have a hearing in order to, for a body to determine whether or not that animal is indeed dangerous or potentially dangerous.
Okay, I can follow up afterwards, if you want, yeah.
So a few years ago, there were some accusations of puppy mills being operated within the county with allegedly very, very poor, unsafe, cruel practices. We said, well, that's the Humane Society issued after work ethic. Well, it's our baby now, if, if that happens. And so the, the recommendations you're making helps make sure that if we have that kind of cruelty, cruel practices, there is a very clear process on, on how to resolve the disputes. So where, where it was much more vague and by implication, the sheriff as the chief law enforcement officer is in charge. But, I mean, this really clarifies it.
What it does, it, the sheriff is no longer, or would not do the random health checks of kennels, but those puppy mills that, that are out there are still subject to animal cruelty laws. And I think that is how they would investigate them, rather than using code enforcement, just investigate them as a, an actual crime, obtaining probable cause, once probable cause is obtained, then having a warrant issued and then doing search and seizure that way. That, not only does that provide clarity, but it also provides protection to the county with code enforcement as written in the kennel laws that were there. Because there is the potential of using one element that is not criminal to inform a criminal activity, you could potentially lose the warrant. The warrant could be determined illegal. And then there's potential for the county to be subject to civil liability. And, and we really want to prevent that. So we're, we're asking the board to view this, view those issues more, not simply as health issues, but more as criminal issues. Does that answer your question?
You know, I'm looking for the, the fact that the, the process is clearer and, you know, we're covered and in, in order to, to do the right kind of enforcement. The, the other, the other kind of issue that has come up in, in the past has actually been more along the lines of the neglect of large animals, like cattle, for example, particularly by owners who may be elderly and not necessarily able, you know, physically to care for the animals as they should. That's not necessarily an intentional, you know, cruelty, but the, the impact on the animals are still the same. Are you, are you clarifying procedures to make it easier to work with those elderly pet owners who, who are, are in decline?
So we did not create code directed specifically to an age that would eventually be determined unconstitutional. What we did enact or, or develop was code that was directed towards the entire population of the county. Now with seizure, there are ways that an elderly individual could potentially give up possession of the animals. And then the sheriff's department could deal with it on their own. So there is a way of addressing that without reaching into criminality. However, those are instances still where there is potential for criminality. And obviously, our office on the other side in the criminal area yeah, has the discretion to review facts as you described. And, and I'm, I think I'm aware of the situation that, that you bring up, the, the cows at large that were, that were problematic for several years among, within this county. We chose to deal with that civilly rather than criminally. We recognize that the individual, there are circumstances that affect an individual's ability to care for animals. And, and certainly the seizure, the new seizure laws take that into consideration.
The, the last, the last area question that I have is something that I've noticed getting a lot of press, not necessarily in Calis County, but across the nation. And it is about the, the mass production of, of feed meat products. Okay, so a lot of animals crammed in very small buildings and that whole, that whole process. I, I, I don't know if we've had any, any issues like that, but here in Calis County, but does the law make it clearer about the lines of the commercial activities, the commercial raising of meat products that that some people might object to as being cruel and unfair, violating the cruelty laws?
Well, some people in those situations would object to them generally. But putting PETA aside, again, animal cruelty laws would adequately address those if indeed there are instances where, where we're viewing like extreme situations. You know, I, I don't know that we have stockyards like Omaha. But I'm sure there, there, there could be an instance in the future where, where it would be addressed. And again, proper search and seizure law, abiding by the constitutional protections to, to investigate potential criminality, which is what that would be, whether it would be animal cruelty in the second degree or animal cruelty in the first degree. The facts would bear that out. What we have here again is opportunities for law enforcement to better understand how to seize and, and then secondarily, how to investigate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? What I'm hearing is, right now, we're talking about six point one two.
Correct.
And you need direction from us on that before we, because depending on what we do on that affects how, how six point one three goes?
Absolutely, absolutely, as well as a resolution that's before this board.
Okay, so then I'll open up a public comment on six point one two.
Commissioners and gentlemen, I don't have a problem with the codes for animal controls. What I have a problem with is the fact that not only can't we enforce criminal law against people, but we have these people in animal control that do absolutely as little as possible because of the uber liberals in this country, in this county, in this country that cry foul. in this country, in this county, in this country that cry foul. For those of us that have service animals and are responsible pet parents or farm pet animal parents. When we call animal control and we get the oh darn, too bad, so sad from not only the county, but the city of Kelso and the city of Longview, things need to change. Puppy meal crap has to go away, not with just, oh, here's a warrant or excuse my language for any of the women in this bill in this room, they just need to be go in with an arrest warrant, arrested, thrown in jail and the key thrown the key thrown away. And same with any of these single people that with the machismoism that have turned certain dogs vicious that people cry foul about. Same. And these uber far liberals that cry foul on everything need to go away too. As a responsible pet parent and have a responsible service dog that's always on a leash. She has been hit three times this year by these irresponsible pet owners and these machismoisms, pit bulls, hybrids and larger dogs. Because they had no tags, no collars and both Calitz, Kelso and Longview gave you the, oh, too bad, so sad that dog or you weren't hurt. Baloney, when that size of a dog comes after a well behaved animal regardless of the size and hurts that animal, that animal needs to be seized, that owner needs to be thrown in jail and the key thrown away, period. Not only with that, but I mean, that's how bad this country has become because of the judges don't do anything against criminals, human criminals or animal criminals because of the uber liberals. Like I said, I have nothing wrong with the code change. I have something problem with the people running these departments. That's my problem. They need to put people in order to say enough is enough.
Certainly clarifying the process and procedures will help achieve that that goal of making sure the law is being enforced the right way. Right now, I mean, this is kind of the preliminary elements of trying to make sure that that due process gives us the tools to do exactly what you're saying. With vague language, which is kind of the way the situation before is very difficult to to make decisions, but this should help.
Due process, due schmarasis. These people that have these vicious, turn these dogs vicious, whether they be whatever, for whatever reason, or have puppy mills or are having their homeless that and I have nothing against the homeless people that are looking for help, but these homeless that have these large sized dogs like that that don't give a damn and don't have tags or licenses or shots because they'd rather just be homeless. Well, these laws need to be enforced and then stop hearing the bullshit of, oh, there's nothing we can do. People in these positions of this type of thing need to either A, start enforcing laws, putting these people in jail or step aside and let people that do, because those of us that are responsible with their service animals and their pets, whether it be a dog or a cat or a cow or a horse or whatever, need to go away. That don't, that give the uber liberal crap and it is crap.
That was a feeble attempt to buy a favor with law enforcement, case I get out of line here. For the record, my name is Mike Kaiser, reside at six fifteen Monahan Road, Castle Rock, Washington. Uh, what I wanted to come up here and say, and I'll just start with following up the last speaker is about loose language. Commissioner Weber, you asked about cramming animals into barns and such things. In the state of Washington, I'm pretty sure it's just about the same in every state of the union. Through the Washington State Department of Agriculture, they have what they call the CAFO program, confined animal feeding operation. And that with their language is so loosely written, you can have one cow and be a confined animal feeding operation. There's a lot of maybe, will, might, so they can do anything. And I don't know if the sheriff's office knows how to track that down, but I'm sure they could probably get on the internet and search something and tell them where to go and find that. And that works in with them in cooperation with the National Resource Conservation Service. So you don't need to worry much about that.
Thank you.
Any other? Seeing this online, so we'll close the public hearing on six point one two. Gentlemen's pleasure.
Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, I I move that we do amend chapter six point one two of the county code on animal control as well as creating a new chapter, six point one three for dangerous animals, adding references to both within chapter two point oh five of the county code.
Before Commissioner Weber, I apologize, but before we move to to create six point one three, I think we do need to have a hearing as well as include public comment on that. So if we can restrain ourselves for a moment, just six point one two. Thank you.
The proposed amendment lists all those things, so that's part in there. All right.
So in that case, I'll help out. I I move to amend the motion to restrict that motion only to six point one two.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve six point one two of Callis County Animal Code. You've had public comments, so we'll just call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you. Okay, let's move into six point one three.
Thank you. As as a result of a review of of six point one two. The next step we wanted to do is prevent and protect, well, protect the county from any potential adverse litigation. We reviewed several counties who have seized animals from individuals and and followed through the results and the results were were concerning, some were staggering upwards in the in the amounts of millions that the counties had to pay out to affected individuals. Most of these occurred with the seizure and declaration of animals as either potentially dangerous or dangerous animals. Most of whom, most of those animals were not afforded an opportunity to have a hearing before that declaration was made. As a result, many counties who had to pay out began working towards just basically a bad dog court, which is once animal control asserts that an animal is potentially dangerous or dangerous. There uh, an individual dog's owner is is given an opportunity to be heard at court. They're given a date. Whether it's a court or a board. Then the board hears the basic facts and makes a determination of by applying those facts to the law and and if indeed the the animal control authority has presented a proper case or an adequate case, then an animal will be determined potentially dangerous or dangerous. This affords due process to the accused animal's owner. Plus, it also makes a better record for future litigation or potential future litigation, as the gentleman here suggested, animals do this all the time. And it's not to say that once a bad dog, always a bad dog, but once we've had a determination by a board, then it makes the of future criminal processes easier. There is an actual finding that can be reviewed through appellate procedure. But that that appellate procedure doesn't overturn the finding, it it can overturn the process and only the process. So it's not not evaluating the facts, only the process that was that got there to get those facts. Six thirteen enshrines our recommendations to this board and to the county that we need to have such a process here in this county to A, ensure due process, to B, ensure that animals that are found to be or determined to be dangerous, potentially dangerous are that and that finding can be upheld so that any future incidents that might occur with that particular animal has weight and has has bearing on on the outcome and and the existence of that animal. We suggest that, and I believe on on June third during our workshop, our public workshop, that a a board is stood up following the the adoption of this ordinance. To include individuals throughout the community who have interests in animals. That board would then be given would hear on, would meet and hear particular cases of potential dangerous and and dangerous animals. They would make their decision and that decision would then become final. As I'm sure now Jordan Spencer will attest, there's only a few months of the year that this would actually be active. Uh, the winter months are less like, you're less likely to have incidents where an animal might might bite or or present as dangerous, whereas in the summer months, you're definitely more likely to have that. So that board would likely meet more regularly in the fall, in winter to process those summer incidents. So that is the overview of what six thirteen would enshrine. It A ensures due process. B ensures the county is protected from unwanted litigation for removing, potentially destroying animals without providing that due process. And and B gives guidance to law enforcement on what they should be doing going forward. We'll see. Do you have any comments?
I think I got Jordan Spencer with the sheriff's office. I think this, as Jason was saying, just kind of helps solidify that process for which we would go about how to accomplish this goal. This is an issue that our animal controllers have have seen, not a lot of, but they have seen it. And so having a an established procedure in place would be significantly beneficial for them.
So I'm a little confused. Okay, a lot confused always. The there was a process before. So just to say that you're putting in a process doesn't help me understand the major distinction between the processes. I'm assuming that you're trying to put a step by step, more detailed process into place. Eliminating ambiguities that might have existed. In real life, ambiguities always exist and the county ends up always chewing the bill. And are there any protections in here from the misbehavior of someone in the public that encumbers the county with all kinds of obligations? Like like the cattle that we had to do something with kind of thing. Who pays for all that? That that that's probably isn't included in anything here, true?
So.
It's a liability to the, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Trying to understand, Mr. Mortensen, the question that you're asking. To respond to ambiguity, the the comment regarding ambiguity, yeah, I, you know, you, we began this hearing with your statement that laws can the more specific, something to the effect that the more specific laws become, the more ambiguous they are.
No, I I I didn't say that.
Okay, well, I may have misunderstood.
To be I'm having a little trouble with your responses because they are a lawyer to lawyer kind of response, which maybe is something should be expected. But the reason we're in a public hearing is because the public needs to understand how this might impact them. And I'm looking for your help to try and flesh that out. Now, in my experience, the best avenue there is to take a typical case federizes, that gentleman presented you some, and just say under the old system, we would have done this and this might have been the outcome. And under the new system, this is how we are going to handle it.
So under the old system, a dog would would present as potentially dangerous and without hearing, basically be determined potentially dangerous.
A little bit more.
So under the old system, as we reviewed it, there was the potential for a dog to be declared dangerous or potentially dangerous without a hearing or an opportunity to present evidence.
Declared by whom?
By Humane Society, which is now the Animal Control Authority. Humane Society was you know, we, so the Animal Control Authority that was associated with Humane Society at the time would that would make a declaration, write it on a piece of paper and say this, this animal is potentially dangerous or dangerous because of and then the court would enter it without a significant hearing. What what the problem with that is, without the significant hearing, there is no opportunity for due process for an individual to present facts that may negate some of those allegations that might mitigate some of the or explain. And and when we're declaring something that raises to the level of potentially criminal or or hold someone to a higher burden going forward, we need to have that.
So how you do that in a new system or in the?
Was that in the old system that did not and was not occurring in this new system? And so that's that's where I think, is there a protection written in there? You do something bad, you can't sue the county? No. But what this does ensure is that the county doesn't do something bad so that they can sue us. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that that does make sense. But in the in the meantime, the 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 owner of an accused dog is going to go through several steps in the process.
Yeah, the the there will be, they have a particular timeline. It's really no longer than a month. From which the the allegations are leveled to where they have an opportunity to admit the allegation. Request a hearing. Got it. Or or suggest that there are mitigating factors.
You mentioned the control board.
Yes.
Is that something we have now?
It is not something that we have now.
And the con- the constitution of that is five people out of the general public or how does that work?
That is up for this board to determine how many individuals, but I would suggest at least three individuals who sit with a potential of five, or you could have five individuals all rotating so that if there are one or two unavailable, at least you have a quorum of three.
And the other question I would, in terms of the financial obligations are we end up in the county in a position where a contractor does something, let's say, and we end up having to clean up after them and take on the obligations for sewer and water, that kind of thing. Uh, and with the with the cattle situation which occurred a few years ago, that was just a big mess. And it costs the public a lot of money because of some people being You know, I I'll say obstinate. I'm not sure what the right word is. I didn't want to look into it in in detail, but it is true that. That we get encumbered with things that are not the fault of the public, not the fault of the county. Yet we seem unable to be made whole as a result of. People just. They turned their back on us. So I I assume there isn't anything in here about that. Way too complicated.
So. Well, I know that the count, the. I'm I'm trying to understand the line that you're drawing between. From the cows to to dangerous animals.
Oh, I'm not trying to make a dangerous animal statement that the cows are dangerous. I'm saying. I used it cows as an example of a situation where it cost the county a lot of money. I I'm not so facile that I can think about a a dangerous animal's situation. Although I'm sure there are many pathological cases one could. Come up with. So it's a simple question was. Was there, is there anything in the code there that prevents the county from being sued or taking on the obligation of having to clean up a. A big mess unforeseen by.
Short answer is no. I don't know that we could legislate. Away an individual's right to sue whether they have. Whether that lawsuit has merit is another thing, but legislating that I I don't believe that we're able to do that.
Well, another way of looking at that is that we are here having this discussion because we have had to take over. From a private entity that wasn't able, didn't have the resources to do the job the right way. So one of the other things that, you know, we heard earlier this morning that there seems to be. A certain level of unresponsiveness from animal control officers. Well, if. If you. If you have a lot, you put a lot of time, effort and energy. Finding out what's going on and and determining that there's some danger out there. Only to have ultimately a judge saying. No. In the future, that sets the standard for that health officer. Why would he investigate very much time, effort and energy because we don't have a process in place to 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 resolve the issue? And I think I think that's the goal ultimately. Because we don't have a choice about due process. Despite the fact that there's a time lag. But right now it's not being done as often as it needs to be because we don't have the procedures in place. So this gets back to a procedure. The thing that I'm a little concerned about was the timeline you described. All the actions or the angst or the anger or the 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 danger occurs in good weather. But you're going to have the hearings three, four, six months later during the winter and I and that that does concern me. I mean, we want to have it a little bit more responsive. Because we're dealing with neighbors and, you know, the. Unpleasant activities.
That's well taken. I probably misspoke.
Okay.
And also your earlier point was also well taken. That is exactly what this is attempting to do to create the process. And to. The issue of unresponsiveness. Now that. The sheriff's department or office is. Is the Animal Control Authority. Several other jurisdictions followed suit. We now have multiple jurisdictions that that are animal control authorities. It's no longer. The Humane Society. It's no longer under a singular umbrella. There are multiple jurisdictions and therefore. There may not be an understanding of which jurisdiction needs to be. Contacted in order to have that conversation. That's an aside to what's happening. Right now, as you're, as you you point out. We're attempting to ensure that our animal control. Authority, our animal control officers and have guidance in what they can and cannot do. As well as ensure that. Those individuals who come in contact with our animal control authority have guidance on what they can and cannot do. And in addition, we want to protect the county from the actions. From any actions that that. Occur based on that interaction.
Just I'm I'm. Totally clear. We have a process in in place and it's a process that's. Had in the past been used by many counties. And it's been. Showing to be faulty because some counties have been paying out six, seven. Figure awards for the way it it operates.
Correct.
Correct. So we're putting in a process that. Is designed to protect us somewhat from that, but still. Still give us authority to take these animals if they need to be taken.
That is a succinct assessment of of what we're attempting to do.
And when we determine that. This animal could be dangerous and we need to have a hearing. What's the the timeframe and and where's the animal stay? Does it stay with the owner? Is it stay with us? And does it have to happen within seven days, thirty days?
So typically, we're not going to be seizing that animal, but there is there because under. Under six point one two, we have clear guidelines on when the animal is going to be seized and what and why it's seized. However, there is going to be a notification. You have to maintain this animal. It has to be within. Specific confines throughout. When that's done, it's usually within fourteen days that the hearing is going to occur, which is a lot faster than any criminal hearing you're going to you're going to see. It is it is quick.
Yeah, that's that's good because I agree with Commissioner Weber. I don't want something and then six months later, the person comes in to. To talk about it, right? So, okay.
It it's even faster than most juvenile jurisdiction, which is thirty days in custody and sixty days out of custody. You're getting, you're you're having that.
And then when this this board that we set up hears that and they. They say, yeah, I think there's been enough evidence to show that this animal is a danger. Do we take control of the animal at that point or?
You do not. There will be obligations that that animal's owner will have to abide by. If they fail to abide by those obligations or choose not to, then we would.
So this board will set up some obligation as long as that that owner, that animal abides by these obligations, they get to keep their animal.
Correct.
If they get out of line there, do we have to go through another hearing or is it just? You've broken probation or you've broken whatever.
If they get out of line, we're no longer in in the board. We're in criminal role.
Okay. Okay. Any other? I'll open up public comment.
I won't introduce myself again because I previously did that. I'll address the. Gentleman from prosecutor's office from sitting in the back row. I fully understand what you're trying to do. Set up a process to prevent what has happened in the past. Because as Humane Society, for lack of a better name, in the past was a contracted. You might as well call it a governmental employee via contract instead of employment. And that's why the county would be. Liable for what they did at the end because the county has the pockets and they don't. So that's fine and dandy. Another thing that I'll get to my second point, which was going to be my first point. This cattle that Commissioner Weber brought up and Commissioner Mortensen wanted to follow up on. That situation, if you're talking about what I think you're talking about is a lot closer to my house than it is Commissioner Dahl's house. And as I look across the front of the room here, there's more sides to that than there is to your little podium up there. And I counted fourteen as I went across that. That was the most convoluted mess in the world. And even when it was in court, there were many things done, probably. Contrary to common sense, and if somebody knew what they're doing to be contract contrary to legal sense. But there aren't a lot of lawyers in this county know what to do with livestock. Because last time I checked, Calhoun County is not the number one livestock producing county in the United States. Or even the state of Washington, or even southwest Washington. So there's no expertise around here, but if somebody. That knew anything about that, that could have been cleaned up in one day, once it got to the court instead of dragging on for weeks. And costing money in the end. I mean, that was a disaster. I, as a citizen, fully appreciate what the prosecutor's office has done to set up a process where he spelled out and you can see where you do and not just. Shooting from the hip, which I really like to do. But the county can't afford to do that when they're acting on my behalf and the behalf of the other hundred thousand people that live in this county. You got to be. Everything's got to be hunky dory and between the lines, so there's no thing left to err. It has to be watertight. And go from there. And I think they've done a pretty good job. And I say that without having read their text, just listening to his description of what it is. And I'm fully confident that they've done a good job and it will be something that will work in the future and hopefully prevent some of the messes that have been there in the past and save us some money. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other? Comments on six point? One, three. Seeing none, close the public comment hearing portion. And the pleasure of the board.
Long to complete it. Now I. Now, Mr. Chairman, I I move to amend. Or create. A move that we create a new chapter six point one, three of the county code for dangerous animals. And add other references to both of these new chapters within. Chapter two point oh five of the county code.
Okay, we have a motion to approve six point one, three. You've had the opportunity for public comment, so call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thank you for your work on this. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Finally, gentlemen, we have a resolution for this body to adopt a fee schedule. Associated with all aspects that we've discussed today.
I don't think I've seen it. I don't recall. Are you trying to find it? We're trying.
If if. It's not found, we can. Put it on for next. Tuesday, I think is simply a resolution. Doesn't require public comment. But.
Not seeing it. Can we do that and?
Yeah, let's.
Get it over and we put it on probably consent agenda or something.
Yeah.
Next week. That'd be all right.
That's fine. And that would be on the seventeenth?
Right.
Okay.
Which happens to be our last meeting of of the year for this board.
Yeah, and I will, I know that it was it was provided to Ms. Grayson, but. We had a lot of stuff going on with these two ordinances so that I'll ensure that a a copy is provided to her again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are open for, I know a lot of us have disappeared, but we are for public comment on anything, so.
A few weeks back, you had a presentation about lower Columbia school gardens. Which. Was to the health board and for you guys to make a recommendation about some money. Well, I stopped my Walmart and picked up a daily news today and what do I find on the front page? A budding plan. It's Klammer School District rowing their own boat. I would hope. When the health board makes its pitch to the Board of County Commissioners, you would very seriously think about that hundred and fifty thousand dollars they're asking for. If Klammer can find a way to do this, I'm sure everybody else can find a way to do this. I don't know a lot of the particulars, but I did listen to the whole pitch that that person had made. And it was pretty lengthy and I think there needs to be a little more meat on the bones. If I was in your position, going to hand out hundred and fifty thousand dollars, especially when these are normally very low budget operations. And there's got to be a way to make that thing work. I mean, it's been around for twenty two years. And after twenty two years, they come and ask for money. What on earth happened in the first twenty years, two years you can't do now would be my first question. And when you get the standard answer, well, maybe you need to try something different. I mean, I'm. As all three of you know, I'm a farmer, so I'm really hip to this teaching the kids how to grow things. I mean, I was a little kid in grade school. My grandpa and grandma had a garden and fed half the world. So you learn there, you're over there doing things. Well, that doesn't happen much anymore like it did. Fifty, sixty years ago. And it's a great thing for them to know where the food comes from besides Safeway and McDonald's. But there's got to be a way. To get things done without that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or at least there'd be a heck of a lot better explanation. Because like I said, Klammer School District, you can read about it in the daily news, is making things work down there. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just to comment on that, Mike, the. Without the parents and student involvement, most anything isn't going to succeed. And I railed in the past about a fact that I could go to a school board meeting and I'll be the only. Only non-school board related individual there. But try to go to the football game and I got to stand in a long line to buy a ticket. PTOs, football, they're always just volunteers doing all kinds of stuff for their kids and this. Plains. Soccer is big. It's all run by parent volunteers. And really, that's what we need to carry it out to to the school gardens. Ian has exhausted himself as best as I can tell. And he just didn't have a succession plan of people saying, ah, yes, we will do it. Well, he did say people leave after their kids graduate. That happens in soccer and sports, baseball, you name it.
Begging the indulgence of the board since Commissioner Mortensen brought up, you know, the PTO. Well, that's the PTOs mentioned here. The PTO down in Klammer bought a Klammer Pod greenhouse, but the aluminum structure blew over during a recent windstorm and couldn't be repaired. The greenhouse, the CTE students plan to build. Will have sturdier wooden frames and be better able to resist high winds. So they're get, they found a way. To replace the thing that the PTO bought. In-house. Now.
And the learning that they get from doing that is what I call the best kind of learning is.
Right. I don't want to say it's a mirror image of Evergreen College where you got the kids in the CTE doing something. And then writing a paper about it and getting credit for it and giving it to the little kids to go do something out in the grade school garden. But it really is, you know, you can say holistic approach or whatever you want to do. Everybody's involved. And the more people you got to have ownership in that program, like maybe one of the kids in the CTE thing's got a little brother or sister coming up. Hey, you want to go do that because we built that in my class, you know, and you get a little bit of invested. In that program, make go ahead, but if you hadn't mentioned PTO, I wouldn't have came back.
Thank you. Any anything else from? Public?
Thank you for your time and allowing me to ask you a couple of questions. I'm new to Commissioner meetings or anything like that. And I'm trying to figure out a process and in how to or is it to bring an adoption. An adoption to. County code to you for a change. What would be the process for? For somebody to be able to do that? How do we present that to you? Does it have to be brought to you? With an attorney? Does it need to? Or do I just write something up that's kind of like the idea what I'm thinking and present it to you, you guys? I live out in the horseshoe bend of states area and.
You live out where?
A horseshoe bend of states. And we have a problem.
So what's the nature of the the change that you'd like?
It's to do with firing of firearms. And we. I think that the that the code is. Too. Opened or I don't want to say open, but it it's too too.
It's not restrictive enough.
Yeah, not non-restrictive. And there needs to be some restrictions. I live right on the river. I've been having a problem with a neighbor. That shoots for four or five, sometimes even six hours, high powered rifles. Yes, he has earthen backstops, but accidents happen. Sometimes people miss their targets. Well, right behind him is the river and BNSF railroad. That's one thing. Now, because I've been raising a little bit of cane with this guy, other people on the river are starting to. Retaliate, kind of, I guess you could say. We had three different people that were shot by shotgun pellets that were camping on my property. Relatives that were out there camping. They're down on the river in a tube floating along and they had shotgun BBs pounding them on their arm. And so it's like, you know. How do we? How what kind of an extreme? I mean, everybody needs to have the right to be able to protect themselves. They need to have the right to, if they have livestock, to protect their livestock and that kind of stuff, but. To be able to. Um, own a gun shop and bring all your customers' guns home and shoot for four or five hours nonstop. Is absurd when you're within three hundred or four hundred feet of somebody else's back door. It's loud, it's obtrusive, obnoxious, it's very. It's a huge public nuisance. And so that was my question on how I can. Put something together and bring it to you guys. I- i- is is that what I do or?
With without discussing the the actual item you have in mind, the specific item. Uh, yeah, you would, if I were you, I would take a look at uh any of the resolutions in the past. And uh, you would craft something up, no lawyer, just you. This is what. And you try to make it as professional as you possibly can. And then you present it to. Probably the clerk of the board. And she would then make sure the chairman gets to gets to look at it. And then the chairman, when. Will bring it up at a meeting and the and the. Board will then decide, do we do we want to do this or not? Uh, the passing of the resolution will cause us to. To charter staff or to ask staff to put together a change in the county, in the county county code. Uh, don't think we need any lawyers. In fact, I think we prefer, I prefer we don't have any lawyers. We want to know.
I love the idea of no lawyers.
Uh, yeah. So I I think that answers your question.
Yeah.
And there may be other ways. I'm sure my. My colleague would have some other suggestions, but. What counts is not so much formality, but the substance.
What counts is what, sir?
Uh, this. Substance. We're we're far less on formality.
Okay.
Than we are on the substance.
Okay.
The only, the only little caveat is that. We have to follow state law.
Right.
So that's where it's at some point along the line, there's, you know, somebody's got to be able to say, well, yes, county can do this. Or no, the state has already preempted us. We can't.
Right.
And we and that's that, but we have lawyers that'll give us that advice if we get to that point with the. With the development. The other angle of that, we will, in the final process, we would ask our uh our lawyers to look through that and if they won't sign, then. We probably think about it twice, but uh.
Okay, all right.
Have you had conversations with the sheriff's office?
Um, yes, and that's that's the that's the deal. There's there's nothing in there that. Is enforceable by the sheriff's department.
Okay.
They're not, he's not, he's not violating any kind of law. Um, it's because it's so, it's just so broad. It's so. Um, like he said, the the sheriff came out and talked to, I was talking to, um, he came over and and um, he says, you know, he says, I live over here in the Lexington area. And he says, you know how them houses are packed in there? And he says, they live in the Calhoun, in the county. If they have the proper backstop. Between your house and their house, they can sit out there and shoot from daylight until dark, seven days a week, and there's nothing I can do about it. And I says, that's absurd. That's a public nuisance. That's safety. That's danger.
It 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 that's like I I I really didn't want to discuss that here. That's very, very complicated. Your public nuisance is someone else's enjoyment and uh. Things with a dense population like that, eventually that'll become a part of the city and uh.
Right.
And then the city rules apply, but uh.
Right. And so it was just like, you can't be kidding. And I mean, it's um, I'm not trying to take away any wanting to see anybody lose their gun rights, but I think that there's. There's two things that need to be protected. One is the recreation on the river because accidents happen. And I think that there should be a buffer between the river, especially between Castle Rock and Lexington. Because that seems to be a fairly popular area of people that live on the river that like to shoot. You can hear them. There's another one that's over on West Side Highway. Across kind of from the Sandy Bend area um that shoots into the river. I was down there fishing and I sat there and watched him. And. You know, I mean, you can't call the sheriff and have him come out there because the event's done and gone. You didn't get a picture of it. You can't do anything about it. So. I've I feel that by adapting a code, that if you're going to do, you know, a shooting or something, you can't be within a thousand feet of the river. Or um, something like that to where it's. Two things, it's not a nuisance for anybody and then it's also it's it's not a danger for anybody. Um, it uh, the the danger for anybody on the river or for the wildlife that are on the river, the the eagles and different things. That's the most important part of it. Um, and um, we've tried to talk to the individual and his his thing was, he said, well, I'll just, he says, I'll send you a text when I'm going to shoot and then you can go in the house and hide for. Until I'm done. It's like. I don't think so. Uh, why should I have to go in the house and hide? Um, uh, there needs to be, I don't know, so um, it it's a, thank you for answering my question. Um, it gives me um, uh, some things that I can address. Take my wife. She's the one that's really good at putting words together and types things up and presenting things and and um, I come up with the idea and she'll help me complete it, so. I thank you very much for your time and and uh, hopefully, uh, we'll talk and see.
Hey, thank you.
And have a very good one.
Any other? Public?
It, there's something that. Sticks with me. Certainly, the animal control exercise was there too. It's a. If laws were passed that could solve criminality, we wouldn't have any criminals. We've got enough laws out there. So I I never wanted to deceive the public into think that we have a panacea now. There are people who misbehave all the time. And we seem incapable under current atmosphere to be able to do anything about that.
You want to talk to us again, Mike?
And and how do you define that misbehavior? Because as you pointed out, somebody's misbehavior is another person's recreational freedom. Yeah.
Exactly why it's a.
Yeah, that's. That that really kind of describes most of the difficult conflicts that we have to deal with. It's it's not between somebody doing right and wrong. It's. Everybody exercising their rights.
But and and the problem I'm trying to alert people of is that has alloyed to the point where people can step into a store and walk out with merchandise and not be prosecuted because. Somehow we end up not understanding that there's a difference between I'm liking vanilla ice cream and you liking chocolate too. I want your vanilla ice, your chocolate ice cream. That's a big leap and we. We mess that up all the time. People live out in the county for various reasons.
Especially, and even even when it's in a highly urbanized area.
Yeah. Well, I hear a neighbor likes to shoot down below me for once. Well, he used to, one of them down there used to have a a had to be a mini cannon. They'd fire off. Once in a while, yeah, but. Part of country living.
Probably not a mini cannon. You can buy the things at the gun store and then shoot with a rifle from whatever distance.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, maybe maybe it was something he was blowing up. Yeah, yeah, that could be.
There's a name for that.
Yeah.
Do you remember it?
Anne Ryan?
Right, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, right?
I just wanted to be sure I hit the target.
Anything else, gentlemen? I'll miss some of these conversations. I got one more week with you.
Well, I think Steve and Steve will have good conversations.
Yeah. Okay, without anything else, we will adjourn.